What are these days?
Death.
Or something, Daniel.
Definitely.
So appreciate it.
Yes.
Have I? No, I've never done this before. You're experienced. No, thank. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those of you who are here, those that are watching and those that will watch later. I'd like to call to order the Rapid City Area Schools Regular Board Meeting. Shirley, can we have a roll call, please?
Troy Carr.
Here.
Jamie Clapham.
Here.
Christine Stephenson.
Here.
Donna Moore.
Here.
Michael Berklin.
Here.
Walt Swan is absent with notice. Katie Urban.
Here.
Thank you.
And just for FYI, so you all remind me that all votes we take tonight will be roll called because Mrs. Moore is viewing online. At this time, we have invocation by Pastor Greg Blanc. Pastor Blanc, you have one minute.
Go brush it. Don't take that off my time. All right. Thank you, Ms. Shirley. Wonderful to see you all again tonight, and I'm grateful for the privilege that you give us to ask God's favor on our city and those making decisions that impact so many people. I've mentioned this before, that I come from a long line of teachers. My mom was a teacher, my grandmother was an elementary school teacher, and being a pastor, I'm a, I'm a teacher of kids of all ages. So again, I'm, I have a, I have a great heart for kids and those who invest in them. So if you don't mind, let's pray. Father, we open up this meeting inviting your presence here. Let your grace and your peace be evident to all. We're thankful that you love the people of Rapid City and you want what's best for us. We acknowledge tonight that our state motto declares under God, the people rule, and as a community, we're grateful to the men and women you have allowed to govern us. Give them the wisdom to seek your guidance as they bear the privilege and responsibility to lead the people of Rapid City. Help them to make decisions that would honor you and thus expect your abundant favor. And all this we ask in the glorious name of the King of the Universe, Jesus. Amen.
I invite you to enter for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda.
So.
Second. Roll call, please.
Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
And Katie.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Right. Persons wishing to the address of the board, we have four on tonight, so each of you will have five minutes. Up next, it's an honor to have a former board member, Mrs. Baker, here with us tonight.
Well, it's kind of weird being on this side, let me tell you. Good afternoon, you guys. I'm here to address and discuss item C on the consent agenda, board of education per diem compensation. This was an item that was on the consent agenda on July sixteenth, Board of Education meeting. However, it was deleted from the agenda by President Carr. That item at least was transparent and stated the amount you're planning to increase your pay. That one stated you would be raising pay per meeting from seventy-five dollars to a hundred and thirty dollars. That's a seventy-three percent increase. It was polled with no explanation, really. Item C of tonight's consent agenda quotes codified law SDCL thirteen dash eight dash thirty-seven pursuant to SDCL four dash seven dash ten point four, but fails to inform the public the amount this board desires to increase their pay. It says each local board shall set forth the amount of per diem each local school board member may receive. However, the amount authorized may not exceed the amount authorized, authorized by the South Dakota Board of Education. What was that dollar amount? I find it a bit, a bit disingenuous that the board has pulled this, pulled this very item from the last consent agenda that at least stated the proposed increased amount and replaced it with this one that does not state the amount of the increase. The public, better known as our bosses or your bosses, most of which would never likely investigate what this amount is that the board plans on approving. I'm happy to share with the public and the staff, this board is about to approve an increase from seventy-five dollars per meeting to a hundred and sixty-six dollars per meeting. That, my friends, is a hundred and twenty-one percent increase to their per diem, per meeting for all meetings. This isn't just two regular meetings a month. This is regular board meetings, study sessions, committee meetings, special executive sessions, leadership meetings, the list goes on. It doesn't matter if it's a fifteen-minute meeting or a five-hour meeting. If they pass this, they will be paid a hundred and sixty-six dollars per meeting. I find it a little bit disturbing the amount of the increase was omitted from the agenda item that as, this is not a small amount of money. For the record, the accumulative, cumulative increase would likely pay for a teacher, a pair or two, or likely more, as I am sure there will be extra executive sessions in the districts near future. I get it. It's been many years since the State Department of Education has increased the approved per diem per meeting. However, I'm struggling with the fact that none of you have served many years, the longest anyone's been on the board as you, President Carr. Some have been on for two years, and the new board member is barely two months. And they plan on voting themselves a hundred and twenty-one percent salary increase. Nobody gets a hundred and twenty-one percent pay raise after only two months. I find it insulting that except for teacher salary, the district staff, that would be our bus drivers, our secretaries, our custodial, our warehouse people, just to name a few, received a four percent raise for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And this board, the one that is literally turning this district upside down right now, thinks they deserve or are entitled to a hundred and twenty-one percent raise. If you're in the money, in, in this for the money, shame on you. Hopefully, one of you will pull this agenda item and amend it to read, the board wishes to increase their board meeting per diem compensation rate four percent from seventy-five dollars to seventy-eight per meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, we have Mrs. Weaver.
Good evening, board. I'd like to echo ditto on everything that Mrs. Baker said. I would like to point out that we've been hearing rumors of bonds and of opt-outs. And now the board wants this huge increase in their pay. Per diem in Latin means per day. And some of the meetings that I understand go longer than four hours will be two meetings. So this whole, this whole agenda item looks to be a little bit arrogant and certainly out of touch with the public that will be paying this, especially on a day following a couple of huge stock market drops. The economy is in turmoil. And people are losing their jobs. And now we're asking them to pay more. The district has never recovered the, the attendance that they had had before COVID. And I frankly don't look for that to change because so many of the people that are moving to our community are in my age bracket and not the age bracket of the people who are having young children. This move seems quite lucrative because I guess if you want to increase your income, you just schedule more meetings. When I was doing research for a lawsuit, I realized by looking at all the districts across the state that this district has more meetings already than any other district. Most school districts can do their business in one meeting a month. The larger ones usually two. But then, of course, there are other meetings as well, and those should be compensated, but it really looks like excess, and I would not, I would not be surprised if someone didn't FOIA your blue sheets at the end of the year just to see where our money is going and how many meetings it is, are necessary to run this district. And speaking of running the district, there is a, a clear absence tonight. The superintendent, and I'm sorry, but there is only one. I'm not trying to go against your rules, but she should be here tonight. Her suspension was over. I see her picture still on the wall. Have you fired her? And if you have, why doesn't the public know? I'm sure the public would like to know. Yes, sir.
That's going over, over the line of, of what our rules are.
Okay, there is a main administrator who should be here tonight. Her picture's on the wall. Have you fired her? If you have not, then tell us. Because I would like to know, the public would like to know, people who are going to send their kids to this district, or maybe not, if she's not in charge, want to know. I'm sure the teachers and the principals want to know as well. There is no transparency here. This person received a glowing review from this body. There was an alleged offense. There was a, an apology and a punishment that happened. Okay, those are complete. And the last time I was here, I was complaining about something that was offensive. I did receive an apology. I accepted it, and I do believe apologies should be accepted. So why can't we accept that one? The fact that she's not here and the fact that many of the attendees who are not here are not here tells me that there is something the public is not being told. So I would encourage you to be honest. Be honest with the public and tell us what's going on. And you should be treating this person fairly. I don't see that happening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next. Next, oh, our next speaker, Mrs. Thompson.
Good evening, board. My name is Florence Thompson. I'm president of South Dakota Parents Involved in Education. I'm also a retired school psychologist with over forty years' experience in the schools, including a lot of Native American schools. I'm going to kind of give you a little bit of a rerun of something I said a while back. I do like to take a, a big picture view of things. I think it's important to know what's really going on. That's why I read a quote from Saul Alinsky last time. The activist Marxist, quite famous. And I believe this is what's happening here in our district. Rule number twelve. This, now remember, this is from a communist, basically Marxist. Rule number twelve. Pick the target, freeze it, personalize it, polarize it, cut off the support network and isolate the target from sympathy. Go after people, not institutions. People hurt faster than institutions. Parenthesis. This is cruel, but very effective. Direct personal criticism and ridicule works. Parenthesis. The recent problems with our chief, how can I say it without breaking the rules? We all know it's in the papers. Our superintendent. This is a political move. She was selected, she was targeted because she is the leader of the district. By taking her out, they can replace her with someone who will, will cooperate with their agenda. They will basically take over the school district. I'm sorry to see that the board appears to be caving to these political tactics. I asked that people would try very hard to be unified and to treat each other kindly and fairly, and stop playing these political games. And not allow yourselves to be played. And don't allow yourselves to be divided or intimidated. Because this is very intimidating. I can appreciate that. These people are very, they're very avid in their beliefs. Even though I believe their beliefs are in error and they are basically activated by powers above, that would be a lot of it Marxist. And so this is, this is to destroy America and weaken America. So don't be, don't be, don't be afraid of this. We have, we have, if, if you're a person of faith, you have the Holy Spirit with you. Be, be of good courage. You can stand up to this. And I, I think that it's, it's, it's very wrong to, to throw somebody under the bus who's been your friend, who's been an extremely good employee and who's tried very hard to be fair to everyone. And who has worked especially very hard with the Native American community and children and through the detention systems and the, the juvenile system and has just had glowing reviews. And it's really not fair. So, you know, I, I would hope that you would stand up. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker, Mrs. Gross.
Good evening, board. My name is Sarah Gross, and I am a parent in the district of a third and fifth grader. I am a teacher in the district, teaching first grade next year, and I have, I'm always speaking on my own behalf because I'm connected in a lot of ways to a lot of people. But I'm nationally board certified, and I have a doctorate in educational administration. And so it's that point in the summer when it's time to go back, like the days are now warm and beautiful, and it's, there's just a point when I, I don't know about other teachers, but I reach a point in the summer, I'm like, all right, I'd love to go see those little people again, or big people. And so teaching is just hands down, I told you a couple of years ago that I would come every month, and I've been remiss, but I love my job. And I love the people I work with, and I want them to stay in teaching. And so today I was at school and I was debating whether I wanted the rug with smiley faces and colors or if I wanted one with ABCs and numbers on it. Other teachers were in the building cleaning out cabinets, and one was someone who had been displaced because we should have had, we had, we didn't have a third grade teacher, and so she was filling in that spot. And so I really appreciate that early on, we got an email that gave people some choice in that. I know it's been a very, very hard year. I know that at the elementary level, it's different. I know that high school teachers are getting ready, watching videos and making videos for their students and preparing all of their coursework. So it's just time, and I'm excited to be back. You know that I think about, if you, if you've listened to me talk, you know, I think about school a lot and schools. And I just recently, on Saturday, was on Rimrock Highway. Imagine going out, I think it's forty-four, and there's a road called Big Bend, and I looked at my husband and I said, Big Bend was a school district in nineteen sixty, and so the Big Bend Presbyterian Church was a schoolhouse, a rural schoolhouse. And so today I come with more, speaking more to, than to the board itself, but others, if you know someone who knows about, I need a little bit on Rockerville. I know there's somebody out there that has a ton of information on Rockerville. I just need to find them. Anderson School District was out by the base. Hevlin is here, between here and Caputa and Valley View, surprisingly, I don't have very much information on. So if you're watching and you know anything about those rural districts, I'd love to chat your ear off. That, I've been following the OCR complaint as well, and it's just been so difficult. It's been, our school district is tender, and I can't, I can't know what to do about that situation, and my heart hurts for everyone. It, it, it brings me to a lot of places because, you know, also, if you've listened to me talk, that I think a lot about a bond. And I'm like, what, what can we do? What, when we ask our community for a bond, what can we do? Because the numbers that the OCR report bring out give data to things that people in our community know. And so I think that when we do ask our community once again, maybe we need a magnet school. Maybe we need, instead of just a Lakota immersion school, a full-on language school. Maybe we need to think, and I don't know how the rules work, but maybe I would love to send my kids to school all summer. I don't like the dip that happens, and I would love some longer breaks. I don't know what we can do today to break the mold that is the traditional model. But with our district, it can't be as nimble as some of those rural schools, as some of the private schools, because we serve what used to be seventeen different rural school districts. They all come into Rapid City. The tree people, to the prairie people. I mean, we, we have a huge district where the weather can be different on two sides of it. And so those are some thoughts that I have, and I connect them to John Hattie. John Hattie is an educational researcher, really, really good stuff. He researches what makes a difference so that teachers can do high effect strategies in their classroom. But collective efficacy is one that sticks with me. It's whether the parents and the kids believe that the teacher is a good teacher. And I think that that's the same, that when we talk in public about our school district, it's doing amazing things. We have struggles. And, and I think that we have to balance as a community, the, the amount that we do complaining about our district and the amount that we do saying, we are serving a huge population of kids, and we're serving them really well. And so do we need work? Yes. But how we say that, I think matters. And the trumpet we blow really matters because when we break that down, it really affects kids, maybe not the kids that you're seeing, but it affects, are we at twelve thousand five hundred? I don't know. But there's so many children in our district that need a strong, robust school system that can't homeschool. They don't have the means. They can't private school. And, or they don't, they really want to be part of this larger conversation. I'm sorry, sorry, I did not see, but thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we have board response to open forum. Right. Not seen any hands. Or we're, they're trying to get them up. Okay. Mrs. Urban.
Thank you all for coming this evening. When the ASBSD notified our district that there was, the state board had increased compensation for not only boards, but things like mileage, we looked at what other districts were doing and historically what our district had done, which is that they were all taking, from Sioux Falls to Lee Deadwood to Mead County to Douglas, they all had, did take the increase to the highest amount, just like our district has done in the past. So I think that's important to note. The language that's in this tonight is also very similar to what the language looks like in other districts. It's not common to change the mileage, like we, our mileage is going to increase for staff too. We wouldn't change that just like we wouldn't change the per diem. So I think there's some, some history there. And it hasn't been changed in decades, from what I understand. So they got pretty far behind. To Ms. Gross, thanks for coming. I totally agree with you. I think there is a lot of great things happening, and we have to focus on those just as much as the, the struggles. Thank you.
I think, Mr. Berklin.
Thank you. I was gonna say much of what Ms. Urban said. The main thing that I wanted to say was in changing the wording, it was to, as you said, align with what other school districts did. If you didn't say the dollar amount, I was gonna say the dollar amount is one hundred and sixty-six dollars. We're not trying to hide, hide that, but as Ms. Urban pointed out, that is wording that can stick with us throughout the years and wording that is used in other districts and puts us in line with every other district. I share a lot of your concerns about that amount. I don't disagree with, with much of what you said. The other thing that I just want to say is, on a similar note, I'm sorry that we can't share more about a whole lot of things, but anything has all the things on the, on that list, we can't talk about either. And so whether someone is here or is not, is not something that we will ever share in a public forum, and I'm sorry that that is the case, but that is, that is the law, and we're gonna follow.
Mrs. Stephenson.
Thanks. Um, I did just want to remind the public, as Michael said, that what is said in executive sessions is we are not able to talk about it. We will never be able to tell you, ever, what we had in those discussions. It was mentioned that the superintendent had a glowing performance review, and that also was part of an executive session. So I just want to remind everybody that executive sessions stay executive sessions and they stay confidential even after you're no longer serving, or if you are serving and having a conversation. So just a reminder.
Anyone else? I would also like to say that the when the board is dealing with personnel issues, those issues the, when the board is dealing with personnel issues, those issues are confidential. And it's great, because on the behalf of the person, that their personal business is not put out on the street. And I would ask anyone who's employed to think about would you want your boss to put your business, no matter what it is, good, bad, or indifferent, in the streets? And I think most of you would say no. And so this board is, is bound by that same confidentiality that you would want in your employ, to the employees of the district. With that being said, there is information that informs our decisions, that as Ms. Stephenson says, that you do not have. And unfortunately, then, the only information that you have are, in a lot of cases, rumors, part truths, and not factual information. So I'm asking the public to, to please understand that and respect that as the board continues to make these decisions. I will be able to say, I will say, that any decision that, that I make, takes into consideration what I feel is best for the district, and what I feel is best for students. And in a fluid situation that the board finds themselves in many times, one set of facts, starting on the first of the month, is not the same set of facts at the end of the month. And so based on how facts change, then I make my decision. But I, 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 I think, and I'll risk speaking for everybody, that we are doing the best that we can to look out for this district and look out for the students of this district. All right. This time, before we have the Assistant Superintendent's Report, I just wanna mention that we have not gotten rid of the sharing the success, which is usually right now. It is just, I think, we'll start it back when the school year starts, and then those things will start back again. So just a, just a note to you all that we haven't gotten rid of that. All right, at this time, Assistant Superintendent's Report from Dr. Strasser. Floor is yours.
Thank you, President Carr and board members. First of all, first of all, focusing on our student pillar. We've been working, and when I say we, I'm talking about Dr. Comer, Ms. Strong, Roberts. It's been a collective effort in bringing, bringing forth a junior kindergarten program into our district. I know it's been in place in previous years, and it's something that we felt very strongly about. So we've been working with several principals, specifically at South Park, General Beetle, and Valley View, and wanting to bring that in and, and benefit our students. So we've made some really good progress, had some high-quality meetings, but yet, there are some roadblocks before we can fully implement our junior kindergarten concept in those, in those buildings. And I'm hopeful to have that in place, relying on, on our leaders to make that happen. So that's our junior kindergarten. We, we continue to monitor enrollment. This is a big time of year, because we, we look at all our PT, or excuse me, our personal transfers, and our open enrollments, and, and approve or, or not of those. So that is taking place right now. I will say that our principals and our HR department have worked extremely hard this year to fill our open positions, so that we can have staff in front of our kids, and working with our kids on, of course, a day-to-day basis. And just really proud of, proud of that work that they've done. Some things regarding our staff pillar. The staff at RCA has completed their discovery curriculum training. That took place over a two-week period in July, and heard a lot of really positive comments about, about that training. So excited to see that come, come to, into implementation and, and into play here this fall. And that'll take place in our Eagles path and our high school prep programs. The behavior refresh was a week ago, and there were over two hundred RCS employees, along with others from around the region. So excited to see people come together to focus on how to, how to improve their work in regards to behavior management. So I thought they went really well, and excited to, to be able, as a district, to offer, offer that to our employees in the region. One of the things that I was able to do this year was have a new principal meeting. It's not something I, I had in place last year, but this was, I felt very beneficial. And I do want to give a shout out to our HR department for putting a binder together. We consistently talk about how do we streamline what we do and how we do it, and to be efficient and effective and practical. And our HR people really helped share a lot of information in a short amount of time. And, and so when you're a new principal coming in, whether you have experience or not, there's just such a steep learning curve. So we did this recently, and just very excited for the work we did there, and, and how that helps our, our new leaders. Been working on the district opener. Again, hope to see everybody there on the nineteenth. So that's coming up awfully fast. And we have our new teacher and staff welcome. That's tomorrow morning, eight o'clock, and again, hope to see you there. I'll introduce you and, and kick that event off, so looking forward to bringing our new staff together. In regards to the community pillar, wanted to follow up on something that started last spring regarding the Rapid City U survey. I met with a few members and, who have put forth that survey, and their desire to bring that into our district, and this is for grades six through twelve. So the goal is to conduct the survey with our students, and then use, utilize that data to inform the work that our lifeways counselors do with our students, and that's specifically in our buildings. So, you know, following all our, our policies for surveys, bringing that, that in at some point this fall. And then the last thing, several of you are going to the ASBSD conference here on Thursday and Friday. So really excited for you to attend that, and learn more about being, being great board members. So that's my report. If you have questions, I'd be happy to take any.
Ms. Clougham.
Not really questions, just a comment. I just wanted to say, I think it's, sometimes we feel like in the grind, like nothing's happening, or it's happening really slow. And I just really appreciate both the junior kindergarten and the behavior, just saying it's really responsive to what both we as a board and staff have asked for, and so I'm just really appreciative of administration being really responsive. I am like, early education is a deep place in my heart, so I'm really excited to have that junior kindergarten. And then, and we'll be interested to see how statistically, and those students do in the next few years, because I know when we get those better foundations, and they're not floundering in second and third grade, I think that's gonna have a really positive effect. So I'm just really appreciative to that response, and was excited to see both those programs this year.
Mrs. Urban.
Thank you, Dr. Strasser. On the junior kindergarten, are you hoping to have that up by the time the school year starts? And how are you guys identifying who can be part of that program?
So those are, those are some of the pieces that we're working, working through. Yes, the, the goal is to have it in place by, by the time the school year starts. And when you look at, it's, it's for students who qualify for kindergarten, so meet, meet the age requirements. And then, that's, that's where we have to, I've kind of let the school teams, along with Ms. Roberts, and work through that part. So I can't tell you much more from my perspective, but we can definitely share some more information at a later point.
All right, Ms. Stephenson.
I also wanted to kind of echo, but one question I do have, just for clarity's sake, for, for staff and the community listening, junior kindergarten is not adding an extra classroom. It is taking the kindergarten kids and dividing, identifying kids who are not kindergarten-ready and putting them in a junior.
That is correct.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to, I knew that, but I wanted to make sure that everybody knows that it's not adding a classroom. Mostly, I just wanted to comment, I really appreciate the teachers at South Park, General Beetle, and Valley View, and the leaders at those schools, and so I just want to share that out into the ether, that I'm super appreciative. I think it was a, it's a, it's a brave thing to volunteer, to pilot a program, and and there'll be some bumps in the road, and nobody's expecting perfection, but I'm glad that they were willing to try it, because what we've heard is it needs to happen, something needs to happen, so I appreciate that. I also wanted to thank you, you know, in our, in our meetings, our task force about substitutes and leave, a lot came up, and you know this, because you were there, but for everybody, that there's some inconsistencies in how principals handle leave and substitute requests. And so I think the new principal meeting and getting everybody on board, I'm sure that is not the only inconsistency in principals, not just leave and substitutes. I'm sure there's a lot of inconsistencies, and what we heard when we asked was, well, what'd you do when you were a new principal? I called up another principal, and kind of heard through the grapevine how it's done. So I really appreciate that they're getting, you know, like a binder, that you have a rulebook for how they can do some of the basic things, so that there's consistency. Thanks.
And to follow up on that, I, I do think in, in a district our size, that consistency piece is the most challenging from building to building. And that's something we're intentionally working on, being more collaborative. That's our PLC work for, for leaders, and meetings like, like that, to bring departments like HR, or TLI, or special services, and, and really have that communication, so that we are moving more cohesively together.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing no hands, we'll have our CFOO report.
Thank you, President Carr. Thank you, board. One moment to share my screen here. Board, tonight I wanted to bring you and the community an update regarding the state of busing services for the district. This is actually an extension of a conversation that I was able to have earlier today with a panel of district employees, and, and included President Carr and, and Mrs. Urban. So unfortunately for them, this is the second time they have to hear it today, but it'd be a much more condensed version than the one they heard earlier. Obviously, we're all aware of some of the difficulties and challenges that we've experienced over the last several years, in, in terms of the district's busing service situation. And we have not often had the opportunity to dive deeper into that issue, and, and talk a lot about the history and some of the causes, and, and ultimately where we see ourselves going in the future. So I wanted to take a few minutes tonight and, and provide this update to, to you all as well. Just to give you some of the basics, I think understanding the complexity and the, the very broad scope of the district's busing services are really important. So the district transports approximately twenty-five hundred students daily. Approximately three hundred and fifty of those are special education students. We run approximately fifty-seven routes, of which twenty-three are sped-related. Between the AM midday and PM runs, our drivers make about seventy-one sped runs every day. All the buses travel approximately one thousand six hundred and sixty miles per day, and about two hundred and ninety-five thousand miles per year. We estimate our annual driver cost at just over twenty-three thousand. We estimate our annual bus maintenance and operation per bus at just under nineteen thousand for an annual estimated cost per route of just over forty-two thousand. So to put that in perspective for you just a little bit, because I think if you don't really have a lot of background and, and don't truly understand the scope of what that means, Sioux Falls, which has more than double our student enrollment, runs bus fleet about half the size of that. And we're gonna talk more about why that is, and, and some of the unique challenges we have in our community. But it, it is a very large and complex operation, in, in terms of a transportation operation. So I think it's really important, as we think about this situation, to talk more about how we got here. And anyone that has been around this situation for a long period of time, this is my sixteenth year working with student transportation services, would tell you that this is not a new issue. It, it's been a slow-burn issue over many, many years. Driver positions have been increasingly difficult to fill over the last fifteen to twenty years across the nation. The last four years have been particularly difficult for RCAS, and I'm gonna give you some, some statistics on that here shortly. We seem to had, seen a real exacerbation of this issue post-COVID, and, and that is not a political statement, it's, it's just a factual statement, as you'll see here in a moment. Again, not only here locally, but across the nation. To give you an idea of, of what this looks like, our, our student transportation staff often looks at this issue in terms of, what are our average openings for the year? Because looking at other ways of, of staffing, that can be confusing. And so the, the post-COVID year, school year twenty-two, we had about four average openings. As we moved into twenty-three, we saw that grow to six. Into last year, school year twenty-four, that grew to nine. And at this point, given our current staffing levels, we are anticipating that to increase to thirteen as we move into this school year. Again, I, I think at times, we tend to look through a very narrow scope and, and think that our problems are, are exclusive to us. And in this situation, that is just not the case. This is, again, a nationwide issue. You see the quote on the left-hand column that's highlighted, came out of a column in the Economic Policy Institute in November of twenty-three, titled "The School Bus Driver Shortage Remains Severe." Approximately two hundred and ninety thousand drivers were employed in the fall of two thousand nine, but those employment levels declined twenty-one point eight percent by twenty nineteen. During the same period, student enrollment at public K-12 schools grew by one point four million. So you don't have to be a mathematician to plot those points on a graph and understand that driver levels decreasing and student enrollment levels increasing represents a problem, again, nationwide. You see the figure on the right-hand side is a, a graphic directly out of that article. The high point in terms of, of bus driver unemployment was that two thousand nine timeframe. We see a real dip here post-COVID in that twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two timeframe. A bit of a rebound as we went into the next couple of years, and then again, a decline across the nation. So again, this is not a, a RCAS-exclusive problem. This is a problem that has been building and continually getting worse across the nation. A, a very quick Google search will show you just that example. And, and so these were a few I pulled just the other day to include. This is from July fifteenth of twenty-four. Orange County Public Schools in Orange County, Florida, working to hire one hundred bus drivers before the start of the school year. So I would say that problem is probably worse than ours at this point. May, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, West Fargo, North Dakota. District has been unable to fill any of the open bus driver positions after being forced to expand its school walk zone. In fact, the district is in a worse position going into the upcoming school year due to additional retirements and resignations. Youngstown, Ohio, April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four, school bus driver shortage grinding parents' gears. I think it's probably safe to say we've ground some gears of our own in this very difficult situation. January of twenty twenty-four, this is a particularly interesting situation. Chicago Public Schools, so a massive public school district, in January of twenty-four, completely disbanded busing for their general education students, continued to run their, their required sped routes, but completely disbanded general ed, because they just couldn't hold up the function anymore. And then lastly, many New York school districts struggling with shortage of bus drivers. And the quote goes on to say that the New York School Bus Contractors Association finds a twenty percent driver shortage for their runs moving into this school year. So again, point being, it is a, a serious issue across the nation, and oftentimes districts find themselves in a, a much more difficult situation than even, even us. I think it's also important to take a, a little bit of a dive into what are some of the causes, and what's leading to this problem. I, I think first of all, it's a niche job, and it's always been a niche job. The, the nature of, of driving makes it a difficult position to hire for, it's a split shift. It is not full-time at this point, and so the very nature of the job at times makes it very, very difficult to hire. Um it is not full-time um at this point, and so the very nature of the job at times makes it very, very difficult to hire. Um baby boomers uh uh make up a significant percentage of the driver base, again, not only in our district, but across the nation. Um and so as those folks move out of the job market and even out of that post-retirement job market, because that's often. Um how we see people coming into that position is post-retirement, still looking for income or benefits or or something to do. Um as those folks continue uh to move out of. That job market, it will continue to shrink that pipeline of of people interested um in going into driving. Competition, uh we've seen uh uh rideshare and delivery service opportunities increased significantly over the last five years, which. Um clearly is has pulled some of the uh um folks that that would have been interested in bus driving away. Uh to fill those types of positions. Compensation, of course, we we can't deny that that is a a significant um factor in this situation. Uh the hourly wage combined with less than full-time hours make for a low overall wage. Um I do always have to plug the idea that. Um we've worked hard on on trying to increase that hourly wage and we do offer health insurance benefits for all of our drivers. Uh which I think is is uh something a lot of districts don't do. Um it's it's a difficult job. I I think uh, you know, President Carr has stopped out. Um in in rode several uh bus routes and um one of the the pieces of feedback you hear often from drivers. Is that it's a very, very difficult job and um it's high stress. Um there are significant behavior issue issues. Uh most of our routes do not have a bus aid, and so it's it's a high-pressure situation for many of those drivers. There are also significant internal factors uh that are contributing to to this issue. Probably the greatest of which is um regarding the bussing radius. So South Dakota qualified law requires that a district our size provide bussing. For students that reside five miles or more from their home attendance center. At some point in the past, I've never been able to determine exactly what that point was. Uh the district moved that radius from five miles down to two point five. Uh which at the time, I'm sure there was um very, very good reasons to do so. However. That obviously is going to drastically increase the number of of students eligible for bussing. Um and thereby grow the the function of transportation and and the needs become much greater. So that's a major contributing factor. Um also, we just have a unique geographic challenge in this district. Our district covers a. Significant geographic area. Um and again, as we. Uh talk about in in terms of our facilities and the way our community is growing and expanding and sprawling outward. That makes the situation more difficult because as the geographic area that we have to cover increases. Um it increases route times, it increases need for drivers. Um it increases the complexity of being able to use those drivers um in a more efficient way. And so. Uh those geographic challenges are are a major contributing factor. And then lastly, uh we continue to see sped needs increasing, as you saw. Um in that second slide, sped numbers have increased and that drastically. Um increases the demand for bussing services around those areas. Obviously, that's not an exhaustive list, but uh uh those are some of the key contributing factors that we see. So what is the impact of all this? Um when we look at route cancellations by year, uh post-COVID, school year twenty-two is really where we started to see this. Become an issue and actually had to start canceling routes. We canceled twenty-five routes that year. Um into school year twenty-three, we canceled two hundred sixty-seven routes. School year twenty-four, we canceled eight hundred forty-five routes. And if current staffing levels stay the way they are as we move into the year, we would project. Probably around a thousand cancellations as we move into this year. Cancellations um are incredibly difficult to manage, and I tell you that uh. The student transportation staff uh has a struggle every single day to hold this picture together and make it work. Um they are incredibly difficult to make equitable in any sense of the word. Um. They are incredibly difficult to schedule in advance. I think that's one of the feedbacks we've heard from the community often is. If we had more warning or if we had a a schedule, that would be very helpful and we would love nothing more than to be able to provide that. Uh what becomes very, very difficult in this very volatile situation is that. Uh we are at a point where we have no bench strength. Um so meaning that. Uh we we have no drivers at this point to fall back on. In the past, the district was able to essentially over-hire drivers. And have uh uh drivers sitting unassigned that on a daily basis, it could call up and say. Hey, we need you on route XYZ today. We don't have that right now. And so um the best laid plans. Often get blown away when you have two or three drivers calling sick or or have a family issue or whatever the case may be. Um and so it it becomes really, really difficult to manage that and make it equitable. Um and then lastly, there are routes that that legally we cannot cancel and we have to protect those routes. And of course, those are. Um the sped routes and and the students that have uh transportation written into their R E Ps. We cannot cancel those routes. We we have to protect those. And so oftentimes, um drivers get stripped away from general ed routes to make sure that those routes are supported. So major impact uh on on our students in our community. Um wanted to touch a little bit further on the projection for um school year twenty-five again. Um currently, we have thirteen openings between general education and sped routes. We'd end, we would anticipate canceling between six and eight routes to start the year. Um overall, probably around a thousand route cancellations, uh again, depending on what happens with the staffing levels. Um a-again, part of the major difficulty in this situation is this constantly fluctuating employment levels. Um and and I think this is a great example because um. As I I believe uh uh Mrs. Clappam said in 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 her comments. I think at times it can appear to the community that nothing is happening and and uh in these situations, we have had. Massive amounts of conversation um and trying to figure out a way to deal with this issue. Um but what makes it really complicated are situations like this. So. Uh just a couple of weeks ago, mid-July, we were having a very, very different discussion. We had had employment levels that held steady throughout the summer. Uh we had hired four new drivers moving into the year. Uh we actually had a conversation that uh we. Felt we would have to cancel very few, i- if any, uh routes as we move into the year. Um and that was two weeks ago. Um since that point, we had four drivers resign through the end of July and two more. Um in the last few days. So we've lost now six drivers. That's even since the time I put this presentation together. Um and we had to uh add an additional route for South Middle School due to the boundary changes. So you swing from being plus four now to basically minus six. And and so it it becomes this incredibly difficult situation. Um and we talk about it oftentimes in terms of a carousel. Um as we have drivers being hired and onboarded, we we have. Folks moving out the back end of that carousel. And so it's it's this constantly moving um picture and moving target. Um I should also make a note. We use every available CDL personnel that we have in the district to run routes. Um including multiple personnel at the warehouse. Both district mechanics, meaning that if a bus breaks down um on an AM or PM route. We do not have a mechanic in the bus barn to address uh uh that bus issue. So we have to find. Uh a way to transport those students and the mechanic after the run and after the the bus is back to the compound will go out and address that. Uh that will also includes multiple supervisors within the student transportation function. So. If you go out to the bus barn um during an AM or PM run, it is a literal ghost town. Uh we may have one staff personnel manning the radios um within that building. So. Uh we we are, I I just want to make a a note that we are using. Every single personnel available that that we have that is CDL certified to um support that function at this point. So uh moving into uh discussion regarding potential options or solutions, I I think it's important to note. Um in in. Not meaning to sound negative, there there are no perfect solutions in this situation. It is a very difficult. And complex situation, and we're not going to find a a magic bullet to address all this. The strategy will need to be a combination of different solutions, um both short and long term, trying to address the issue. And I think uh being transparent, effectively addressing the situation is is likely going to require difficult decisions. Um just want to give uh an idea, um again, regarding compensation of of what the district has done over the last several years. Um we know it's a major component of of our ability to hire drivers. The district took an aggressive approach to increasing wages during last year's negotiations. We increased starting driver wage uh just over seventeen percent to nineteen thirty-eight an hour. We increased starting bus aid wage nineteen percent to fifteen forty-eight an hour. I think right now we could say that anecdotally, it appears to be an uptick in in activity around applications, um which is great. Uh we're early on, it's difficult to tell. Um it'll it'll take some time to to really understand how that impacted um some of that activity. However, converting those applications into employees. Um especially with bus drivers is very difficult. Uh we would ballpark that approximately one in five people that we offer a driving position. Um actually get through the CDL training, testing, licensing and and on the road. That is um. Part of the conundrum we face in terms of, we don't require a CDL prior to becoming an employee. We. Will hire, we will train, and we will pay for the licensing, excuse me, testing and licensing for CDL drivers. And so. Um we often uh uh have to work those folks all the way through the process and. Uh between those two points, it's it's very difficult to convert uh those applications into getting drivers on the road. Um so I think it it's still difficult to say what the impact of of compensation increase will be. Um it's obviously a point that we need to continue to work hard on and and increase um our compensation to our drivers. Again, I I always want to mention in any of these conversations that we employ, train and pay for licensing and testing for all drivers. And that all drivers receive full insurance benefits. Some of the other solutions that we've discussed over this last uh two to three-year period, um and this is not an exhaustive list and. Again, this is a a rabbit hole of a discussion. And so these are just brief touching on things that we've discussed. We've we've discussed the idea of of reducing the number of pickup areas and or moving pickup times up so that we could utilize current bus staff. In essentially a double-run scenario. We've discussed the idea of uh reducing sped transfers. So um oftentimes, the sped program. That the student is uh a part of will be uh significant uh distance away from their home uh attendance center. And so we often have to have multiple um. Transfer points in which those students will transfer buses. Um and so if we could reduce the number of transfers happening. Um again, reduce the the amount of time that takes and hopefully utilize our drivers more efficiently. Um we've discussed the idea of permanent route route cancellations, not forever. Um but uh for example, um canceling a a specific number of routes for. A semester or a quarter or the year or whatever the case may be, um with some type of compensation. Um just understanding that 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 would give parents, guardians that are affected by this uh more stability and at at least a. Uh a path forward. Um we've discussed the idea of non-CDL modes of transportation, so smaller buses, passenger vans. Uh large SUVs and and how we could incorporate those into our fleet. Staggered schedules uh being one of the ideas that that gained a lot of steam and that we. Uh that we discuss quite often. So um staggering elementary and middle school schedules, again, with the idea that we could use our. Current staff uh more efficiently and and essentially doing double runs. Um again, the idea of moving moving the bus bussing radius from two and a half out to um another distance. We've discussed the supplementation of bussing staff, looking at uh transportation inviter providers in our region and and how they could supplement the bussing staff. Uh partnering with the city's Rapid Ride Bus Service, carpooling a rideshare program. So that's just a a a brief handful of a lot of the. Um ideas that we've discussed. All those options have pros and cons, um difficult logistical issues to work through and and ultimately major challenges. Ultimately, every single one of those options have a profound impact on our students and our community. And we believe need to be well-vetted as viable solutions prior to bringing them forward to the Board of Education's recommendations. So. Lastly, oops, sorry. Excuse me, um very quickly uh discussing the future. So again, uh uh the the solution will require a combination of those strategies. I think what we can. Definitively say now is that our current practice is unsustainable. Um. We, like many districts across the nation, I I think did a holding pattern over the last couple of years to see if. The situation would normalize post-COVID, if employment levels would come back, if the activity level of applications would increase. Um in in that just hasn't happened the way that that uh anyone anticipated. Um of course, we hope the wage boosts might cause a rebound. Again, I think it's early to to judge whether or not that's happened. Uh but the reality is that that this is most likely our new normal and that, again, in all likelihood, the situation will worsen as time goes on. So. Um we must have a long-term plan that provides clarity and and relief to the community. So a a couple of uh one immediate recommendation uh that that came out of this conversation is. Um we are going to bring forward a proposal to the board um to engage in a function study. So there are. Transportation and logistics companies that will come in, that will study that function, that will look at. Um your community, uh your enrollment, the geographic area of your community, um your bussing staff. Um and and ultimately come forward with uh professional recommendations around how you could improve um the situation. Um we believe that that is extremely important. Um we feel like we have a. Uh capable um supervisory staff. However, you can have blind spots and uh. Ultimately, uh something like this would really help. And as we push into discussing. Um longer-term um solutions that that this would really help with that conversation and help to guide a lot of. Um problem-solving as we we push into that situation. And then, of course, uh long-term recommendations would would really be based on the results of that function study. Um we would hope to engage in that study ASAP. Um with results and recommendations that could be communicated to the Board of Education and the community by late fall timeframe. Um determine the implementation date of of those changes and ultimately start engaging um the community. Community in discussions regarding those changes. A few other things to know, um we are hoping to finalize cancellations and communicate uh that information out to. Um to the community next week. Um we're going to work on a video message that. Um in large part covers a lot of this information that that uh. Folks that that don't get an opportunity to watch board meetings can can view and and hopefully better understand the situation. And a letter that that will go out to parents and stakeholders in the next week. Um that would include detailed directions on the reimbursement process and and how to access access that information for um our parents and guardians. So. With that, President Carr, I will uh turn it over to the board for any discussion or questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Questions?
I don't have a question. I think this is really great information and I'm excited to hear that you're going to get it out in the next week. Because I think the more time that people have to prepare, the happier they'll be and that transparency goes um a really long way. And I think. A study is a great idea and it will give legit legitimacy to whatever decisions we make in the long term. Thank you.
Anybody else that I'm not seeing? Mrs. Stephenson?
Thanks. Um I second that. A function study sounds like a terrific next step. Because it does feel like whack-a-mole a little bit, like, well, we gave him raises and we did, you know, we're trying to change. Appreciate that. The question that I had, these six employees who left, did they give a reason? Did anybody ask why? Like. Why are people leaving right before the start of the school year? I can imagine that was a hard decision for them to make and it certainly is hard for us.
I I, you know, with respect to the the privacy rights of those folks, I I think um. Often what happens um with a lot of our our current staff is um being in that. Quasi-retirement, close to retirement or post-retirement stage and or um folks that. Own their own businesses and are are looking for supplementation of income and and a lot of those things. They are um dealing with a lot of of life functions. And so. Um often what we see is is uh life circumstances, things that are happening that are. Um at times out of their control. And uh again, I I think a lot of them struggle with uh. Uh the the difficult situations that that happen on the buses. Um again, uh the the behavioral issue as it impacts. Um what's happening in a school certainly impacts what's happening on a bus. So I think there's a a various uh amount of reasons. Um, what's happening in a school certainly impacts what's happening on a bus. So I think there's a a various uh amount of reasons. I. I don't know that we could circle in and say, you know, this is the one reason. It's it's a. It's a plethora of of different issues that are that are impacting that. It's really unfortunate. Um, when when those types of things happen right before a school year because it gives us very little time, again, to to be able to react and respond to that. I I I think full transparency, again, you know, two weeks ago, we were having a a totally different looking conversation. And so. Um, it makes it especially difficult to to deal with those things when um you have a rash of of resignations. And so. Uh, it it's just a difficult and complex situation. And and I don't know that I could zone in on one to two factors that that would really explain that.
Anybody else? I'd like to thank Mr. Sassy. I asked him, uh, we had the this presentation at noon. And um, there were several, I don't want people to think this um originated from me, but there were several people at the meeting that said. Part of the the situation is being honest with community and letting them know what the situation is. And sometimes, you know. I use this example, when I go to the doctors, I want to just tell it like it is, you know, no sugarcoating around, just boom, this is it. And so I think it's important for community to know, this is where we are, this is why we're there. That we are looking at it, we are concerned about it, we're trying to do something about it, don't have any answers right now, but we're. Diligently working on it. So that's why he had this presentation tonight. We'll have a a video to to get the information out. The outreach committee uh of the board will have maybe a listening session, however they decide to. Again, bring up this issue and inform the community of of what the situation is and get their input on some solutions and and go from there. So thank you for.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
All right. We have no conflict of interest. Uh, we're at item number ten. I will entertain a motion for the approval of proposed. Is there any one of the agreements a a board member would like to pull?
I would like to pull um A.
A. Okay, any anything else? All right. Oh, so now I need a motion um to approve proposed agreements Bravo and Charlie.
So moved. Second.
Okay, has been moved and seconded to approve um Bravo and Charlie. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion, all in favor. Yes, but all in favor, you signify by saying I or yes.
Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
And Katie.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Uh, and technically by Robert's rules, I do have to mention if there are any no's, you may say no. It it sounds dumb because everybody agreed, but just so that we are following the rules. All right, I'll entertain a motion for agreement of with Lifescape two thousand four, two thousand five.
Second.
Miss Urban moved and Mr. Berkland seconded.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion.
I just am going to abstain because I work for Lifescape.
Oh, okay. Any other discussion? All right, uh, all in favor signify by saying.
Troy.
Uh, yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Epstein.
Um, Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
And Katie.
Yes.
We have five with one Epstein.
All right, so motion passes. All right, item number eleven, any item a board member would like to pull? Ms. Clapham.
Um, Charlie and Hotel, please.
Thank you. Very good.
Good morning.
Well, we'll all be military people yet. Okay, Charlie and Hotel, any other pulls? Okay, I'll uh entertain a motion to approve proposed consent a- agenda. Excluding Charlie and Hotel. All in favor will have say I at the roll call.
Do we get a motion?
Make the motion to approve. Second.
Okay, okay, we need a motion. Okay.
Michael. Thank you.
All right, roll call, vote please.
Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
And Katie.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you very much. Um, item number C, I'll in it, I'll entertain a motion and a second for Board of Education per diem compensation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Um, so I s- since I pulled it, I I really wrestled and wrestled and struggled with this. I see. I see definitely. Kind of two sides and a lot of factors. Um, I mean, when we look at what. City Council and other public entities are hit is considerably um more. I did at the same time struggle with going all the way to the maximum immediately. So my happy medium proposal would be to change, um, it says approve the. Per diem rate, I would prefer to change it to one twenty-five would be my. Proposal, obviously.
Okay, uh, we'll do this. Um, we'll we'll finish the discussion. And if you want to amend, then we'll we'll entertain that motion to amend. Any other, Mr. Berkland?
Uh, yeah, um, thank you. Um, I share a lot of the same feelings of going back and forth. Um, initially, I was. A hard no, and now I'm leaning more towards a a yes. Um, just a couple of things that I worked out, sorry. Uh, Dr. Schlosser, while you were talking, I worked these out. Um, but I had already. Yeah. Um, but um inflation, if we had just done inflation since two thousand five, I believe, is the last time this was updated. Is that correct? Um, since the last time this was updated, um, inflationary would just be, would put us at a hundred and twenty-four. Um, four percent every year since then would put us at a hundred and thirty-five and five percent every year um would put us at a hundred and fifty-five. Um. My other kind of reason why I'm leaning towards yes is every governing body does this. And so thinking forward into the future, um. If it's going to be another fifteen years, someone has to do it. Like, it feels gross to give yourself a raise. I totally agree with that. But that's kind of what we do. Um, and so I, thinking longevity, I'm I'm leaning toward yes, but I I'm also. Open to a to a different number there as well. But I just wanted to throw those numbers out there for everyone to to think about in there.
Mrs. Urban.
Thank you for the the math.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's important to point out that this per diem was set by the state board. Other boards. Like the one that many of you were on before could have taken a lower per diem, but taking the max is the norm. It's the norm in this district, it's the norm across the state. I do not know of any districts that have taken below that per diem. Um, just like we're going to implement the new mileage per diem set by the state, they were very behind, they probably should have been keeping up through the times and they haven't. Um, but certainly no one is here for the money. Um, and a lot of the board members. Donate a lot of time and don't write that down or don't expect a request to get paid. So any continuation that that is not the case is just offensive. Um, but I don't see why this board should be paid any less than any other board in this state. That's it.
All right, Mrs. Stephenson.
Um. Thanks, Michael, for those numbers. I do appreciate those as well. Um, I too am offended by the. By the accusation that anybody's doing this for money. I mean. I I would hope that the people who are listening to these meetings know that we do a lot of work and our heart is here. For serving our community. Um, the the truth is, though, is that it can be a big job and um. You know, I went down in my employment, one day fewer a week so that I could manage everything. And I did that happily because of service to the community, but. I know many people who would be great members of this board um in the future. Who can't do it because they can't afford to go down a week on their work. And I don't know, this might, this might sway the balance in that decision. We need. Good, um, we need to commensurate people for serving on boards and it um. I agree with you, Katie, that if you compare even what school board members make here compared to around the country and and. What every other district in the state is doing, I don't feel um. I don't feel terrible about keeping up with that. I I feel like it's um not an awful thing to do. It's not an amount of money and I. Maybe Coy could tell us a little bit more, but it's not an amount of money that's gonna. Break the district that we're sacrificing a lot to do. Um, but to get the compensation up, I think is a reasonable thing and. And yeah, if it's not gonna happen for another ten years, then we don't want to put it on a future board. So, um, that's where I fell. After a lot of thought about this.
All right, Mrs. Clapham.
Um, to kind of follow up as my my thoughts are processing as things are being said, um, one, to clarify. You know, we say not on a future board, but technically it still has to be voted on every year, like by statute anyway. So, yes, it could still be written as a maximum, but a board a year from now could change it if they want to. And every board prior to this has that same opportunity. So nothing is. Permanent, like that's, boards decide that, a board could decide to vote zero if they wanted, zero dollars if they wanted to. So just to clarify, like, that's something required by statute that we have to vote on every year. Um, the other thing I think to um. Kind of flesh out too is that when we talk about, again, I don't think anybody has any expectation of being paid for every minute of their time, but. Uh, President Carr really pointed this out to me and and I, when I first started on the board, I did keep up. So, yes, it 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 appears sometimes, okay, a fifteen-minute meeting for whatever amount of dollars, but that doesn't account for. How much time you spent reading the agenda. That doesn't account for how many emails you sent that week or how many phone calls you had or how many texts you had or how many, I mean. I have calculated some weeks, that's twenty hours in a week. Some weeks it's not, some weeks it's. Three hours in a meeting and I'm done. But in regular quote-unquote jobs, like you, you know, you're doing. You're paid for your job, but in this case, it's like, yes, it on paper is, we're paid for the time we're sitting here. But there's a whole lot of other things that come into that that aren't necessarily counted for. And again, I don't think it would be at all reasonable to calculate. Well, this is what I should be paid for every minute of my time, but um, there is a lot of other time that goes in besides when we're sitting behind these desks that I think sometimes. In the public eye may not be seen if you just pull a blue sheet and say, well, this means meetings, but that's not really the full picture of the time.
Thank you. Mr. Berkland.
Thank you. Um, I want to say thank you to Ms. Stephenson because you kind of brought something to my attention that I think makes me even more lean yes. And that is the accessibility of this position. Um, I think all of us right now. Can and have made those sacrifices, but thinking forward, if we want a representational board. We want to make it a board that everyone can be on. Um, and so I I do appreciate that that point of. The sacrifices you've had to make to do this and thinking of, thinking of who who might want to sit in this seat later on, if they are. Blocked by that money aspect, I don't feel like that is how our political system should work. Whether it's this political or not, whatever, how our election system should work. Um, so I appreciate that comment and I think that that is. Made me feel better about voting yes.
All right, any other comments? Um, I wanted to kind of dispel some of the comments that I've I've heard tonight. Um, number one, I've never been in a fifteen-minute meeting in the two and a half years that I've that I've been here. Um, the meetings that I'm in are an hour and or more. Um, a four-hour meeting, as our board meetings are average, is not considered two meetings. It's it's one, so. We're here until till we done, and that doesn't does not count as as two two meetings. I want to thank um. Uh, Mr. Berkland for for his his calculation because I think it's injustice to say. That the board is making a hundred and twenty-one, whatever the number that was given, increased. I I've been on the board two and a half years, I've improved, approved an increase for every. Person in this district every year. I've supported that and would support it, will will continue to support it. And for uh. The board to not have had anything in fifteen, twenty years, depending on who you ask, or two thousand and five, whatever your your number is. I I I think it's dis- disingenuous. And I too also must say that um, I'm offended by the thought that. Um, I'm in this job for the money. When I first. Was asked to to join, I didn't know they got me. I I didn't didn't even know anything. And um. I was here at noon to three. Back at five, will probably be here till nine. And I don't say that to complain, I say that I'm, I do that because I want to serve the the community. So to say that I'm in it. Um, for the money, that even suggested suggestion or accusation is is offensive. Okay, any other discussion? All right, let uh, so. Let's do this, uh, Ms. Clapham. Let's. Take a vote on this current motion. If it doesn't pass, then we can entertain. A new motion, okay? All right, so uh, Charlie, all in favor, now I'm not, we're not. I have to say this part so that we, the roll call, you know what to say. All right, um, all in favor of approving the Board of Education per diem compensation will signify by saying I. All right, roll call, please.
Troy.
I.
Jamie.
No.
Christine.
I.
Donna.
No.
Michael.
Hi.
Katie.
Hi.
Four eyes, two no's.
Right, thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Item Hotel enrollment options.
Are we to discuss?
Yeah.
I will make a vote and do approve.
Need a motion and a, let's say.
I'm both.
So moved.
Second, whatever. Me and Jamie somehow.
Second, discussion on enrollment options.
So my only discussion, this is really a clerical, it, when you get down to administrative consideration, it says has received. This request for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, and I think it needs to say the twenty-four, twenty-five unless this is like a historic. Look backwards, I don't think it is actually. And I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know if that was trying to provide me with background information from. Last year or it's just a typo.
Let me look at that.
We'll we'll update that to twenty-four, twenty-five, that would for be for this coming year.
That's what I thought, so just wanted to hear.
I'll make sure she gets that corrected.
Okay. So.
We need a motion to change that? Have a motion to make that edit.
Okay. We have.
Correction of the typo error.
Yes.
Yes, it's been motioned and seconded, roll call vote please to change it, change the date.
Troy.
I.
Jamie.
I.
Christine.
I.
Donna.
I.
Michael.
Hi.
And Katie.
I.
Motion passes six zero.
Okay, the motion for the change passes. Now the motion on the, we need a motion and second it. Um, to approve the enrollment options as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Who seconded? Michael. Troy.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Excuse me, Jamie.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
And Katie.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, thank you, everyone. Item number twelve, items for board information. Um. I'll put this in the hands of Mr. Uh, Dr. Schlosser and then he will. He will tell us where we're going from here.
All right, so uh Jennifer Roberts, Director of Teaching, Learning and Innovation, is going to. Give a brief presentation about the work the district is doing relative to advanced learning opportunities pursuant to the voluntary resolution agreement. With the Office of Civil Rights. So before uh Mrs. Roberts starts, as she's getting things set up, I I want to give a couple of updates. So the district has already done significant work in the areas of discipline, truancy, and adv- So the district has already done significant work in the areas of discipline, truancy and advanced learning opportunities. The, those are the three areas of concern noted in the voluntary resolution agreement. The district has been pulling and reviewing data from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, discussing possible opportunities and solutions. Reviewing and updating record keeping protocol, uh, and many more things. We have received numerous nominations and requests to serve as a committee member on the Stakeholder Committee. The Stakeholder Committee will be instrumental in working through the voluntary resolution agreement. So the district has proposed numerous expert consultants for approval to the OCR. So as we uh, look forward to uh, continually offering uh, the board updates uh, and the community as well. Uh, we continue to uh, just dive into that work um, each, each day. So. Are you ready, Ms. Roberts? Alright, there you go.
Okay, um, so. The project that I've been working on with this is about advanced learning opportunities. And um, one of the concerns were whether advanced learning opportunities are equitably offered across schools within the district. And so that's what we were addressing. Um, advanced learning opportunities are courses that are more challenging than regular courses. They require more time and effort from the student. Some examples are sixth grade advanced reading, eighth grade algebra, advanced English nine. AP US government and college algebra. So there are quite a variety of courses that are included under that umbrella of advanced learning opportunities. I think I skipped one. Nope. Always kind of hard to tell sometimes. So um, for. Middle school, the courses that are the advanced learning opportunities are designed to align with the high school advanced learning opportunities. Um, and there is one of them, the eighth grade algebra, which is taught to high school algebra core standards and students can earn a high school credit. The high school advanced courses are designed to increase the odds that students will be successful in advanced placement courses. That are available later in high school, there are a few of those. And then the advanced placement courses are taught by certified AP teachers. Those courses are taught to the AP core standards with the end goal of helping students achieve. High enough scores on the AP test that they take in the spring, that allows them to earn a college credit to save time and money in college. And different colleges require different scores. Um, some colleges will take a two, some are a three, it. Kind of depends, there's quite a bit of variation there, but we're really looking at trying to help students achieve the score that's going to earn them credit. Depending on where they're going to college. Um, the dual concurrent enrollment courses are courses that are taken through South Dakota public post-secondary institutions. And those are WDT, Black Hill State University and the like, and those are transcripted by both the high school and the post-secondary institution. And so the student earns credit both places and it saves them time and money in college, and it costs less than taking college courses later. It's about fifty dollars per credit hour, which is quite a significant savings for students um, on college courses. So pros and cons are that students can save time by earning high school credit while they're in middle school and or college credit while in high school. Um, so it, it helps for that time and money, um, and can, can improve their high school GPA. Because advanced placement courses are weighted more heavily. So typically on a student's GPA, a course counts as one. Towards their um, weighted for that, and then if it's an advanced course, it's one point two five. So they can get a higher than a four point oh if they're taking more of the AP courses. Um, courses can be very challenging to take and they um, require significantly more time and effort than regular classes. And they can be very stressful. They can have a negative impact on the student's high school and college GPA because if they're not successful. It takes down their GPA, um, when the student maybe has struggled with their high school courses because they're more difficult. And then also, taking them, it already starts their GPA for college, and so that. If they're not successful, because maybe they're really not prepared to be taking college courses as a high school student. And it could start them off with not a great college GPA already. So it's something that they definitely have to consider, what's best for the student. So to address the concern, we looked at two years of data. And we looked at which advanced learning opportunities were offered at each school and which ones were taught. And we offered the same courses, but students didn't always enroll in them. Sometimes we didn't have enough students enrolled to have the course go. Uh, maybe we didn't have a teacher to be able to teach it. So there's a couple of things that happened there. And then we looked at which students were enrolled in the advanced learning opportunities. And how that compared to each students, or each school's demographics. And then we also looked at what criteria. Was used to determine enrollment in some of the advanced learning opportunities, because in some schools, there were some, so we. Had to take a look at that. So some of the work that happened is the Advanced Learning Opportunities Committee was formed. The committee examined the data and looked at RCAS policies and procedures. The committee met with the middle school principals twice. The committee met with the high school principals alone once, and then the committee met with all the high school and, and the middle school and high school principals together. So um, what we, the teachers or the principals noted some things that I thought were really important is that. Um, Rapid City area schools, middle school and high school administrators all recognize the pitfalls of using subjective data to make decisions. So should a student take an AP course or advanced placement course or not, um, they. Recognize that there's drawbacks to using subjective data to determine that. Um, all of the administrators recognize that factors such as test anxiety or just having a bad day. Can have an impact on using single test results. And middle school and high school administrators also recognize that students' effort. And persistence impact their academic achievement, as well as developmental changes, maturity and personal goals. So that what is true for a student in one school year may might not be true for that student the next year. And so there's changes and so saying. A student, you know, identifying a student, you know, thinking it would be good for them to take advanced placement courses. That could change, and it can go change either way depending on what's going on with the students. And so we really wanted to look at removing some of those factors. So eligibility, um, what we have now is that all students are eligible for advanced learning opportunities. Advanced learning opportunities are a student and parent slash guardian decision to be made after careful consideration. Of the advantages and challenges that come with advanced learning opportunities. Consideration should be given to the student's goals, their aptitudes and their interests. While advanced learning opportunities might give students a jumpstart in college and could save them money. They also can require significantly more time and effort, and it can be stressful for students and families. And if any of you have ever tried to struggle with a student in doing uh, work, maybe in your own home, about getting schoolwork done, who didn't want to. Um, you know what I'm talking about. That can be very difficult. And um, there are some costs. For AP tests and for the college credits and textbooks and um, Rapid City area schools. Already did offer financial assistance to help defray those costs for students in need and will continue to do so. So our overview, looking forward to the school year for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, things that were already set for um, communication that went out. Um, student enrollment in classes, staffing for classes, scheduling for entire schools had already happened. So we need to look forward to the next school year. Um, so our purpose is to ensure equitable access to advanced learning opportunities. Regardless of which of the RCAS comprehensive schools students attend. The same classes will be offered during pre-registration at the comprehensive middle schools. The same classes will be offered during pre-registration at the comprehensive high schools. And I put those on different points because of course there's different middle school and high school courses. And we will communicate through presentations for parents slash guardians, presentations to students and by sending information home. So that families can make the most informed decisions about what's best for their students. And financial assistance is avail, available to help for test fees and dual enrollment costs for students in need. And so that's. What we've got going on with advanced learning opportunities. So, any questions?
Um, I do. How, so now that it's open to all students. How is that communicated to all stu-
Well, we do have, um, we will be having um, sessions that are open to parents and guardians. And mo, the bulk of it goes with students at the time of pre-registration. So there's a lot that our school counselors and our teachers that, and that type of thing that already happened. And things that are sent home with students to help their parents, as they work with them to enroll for their courses for the next school year. So there will be a lot of it that happens at that point. Um, and then also, so with. The communication that happens in person and then the things that get sent home, so.
I was just trying to think of head of, of, of parents saying, I didn't know, and so.
Yeah.
That piece will probably be very important.
It will.
Everybody knows and then after knowing can make a choice.
Yes, and so we'll be documenting all of the efforts that we make at that communication. So that we're able to um, show what we've tried to do. We know nothing is perfect. Um, as an example, there's times that we mail things home and people. Move and just forget to tell us that they changed their address.
Yeah.
And you know, that type of thing happens and so we do our very best.
Yeah, okay. Alright, Mrs. Clapham.
Um, one, uh, Mr. President Carr, I think that might be, um, I'm kinda writing a list for our community outreach to educate our. Community on things that are going on, so I think that's a great opportunity for us uh, to support our staff in that. Uh, I wanted a comment, I am just, I am blown away. It's been three months, like this is really impressive. Um, with how much effort and energy, and I know it was not easy, and you have not been in this job very long there, so I'm. Just really pleased and impressed with the hard work uh, to address this. I really appreciate it. Um. Other comment being, I, I feel like we get a lot of feedback and it's somewhat of a quote unquote buzzword of parental involvement, and I really appreciate this. Parents are choosing, like it's not that you're a four point oh student, you get to, so I think that's really important. I think sometimes. The kind of narrative of. School controls or who controls what, and this is very much like this is up to families, and I think you very clearly communicated that, and I'm very appreciative of that. And one question on the high schools, so. It's the same class staff because I know a challenge that we have struggled with is that we have a Spanish four teacher over here, but we don't have a Spanish four teacher over here. Or we have, so how will we address that? Is that just that we have to figure out when it comes, or what does that look like?
Well, we certainly will open. Will be opening the same classes up for pre-registration. And then one of the things that happens for all courses at the high school. Is what do numbers look like? So for example, if you took. Crafts and only eight students signed up for crafts because the interest just wasn't there. That class wouldn't run because there's not enough number, student numbers to make it work. So advanced learning opportunities are the same as our regular classes. If the student number, if the student interest isn't high enough. It doesn't happen because we do have to schedule students. Um, the other thing we'll be looking at is, do we have the certified staff? So then we'll make every effort to try to hire staff, um, get staff that we already have. Um, we provide training, um, we had a few staff members go to training this summer to get the AP certification so that we are set for school this year. So every effort will be made, and then we'll document those. So we'll be documenting, you know, these were the numbers and these were the classes that. Didn't run at this school due to lack of student interest. Or these are the classes that students were interested and every effort was made to hire and staff, and we were not able to. And so that's all we can do, I think, is to do our very best and to document all of the efforts and all of the steps that are taken. Um, students in Rapid City area schools are able to take courses in other schools. That aren't available at their school. Um, so that is always something that can work. Um. So you know, so there's kind of a, a whole gamut of things that happen um, for us to be able to make, make all of it work.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Berkland.
Thank you. Um, you answered a lot of the questions with Jamie, but I also just wanted to say thank you for this and I'm glad. Not glad the OCR before I came out, but I'm glad that it did help us to make some of these decisions, especially regarding. How we put students into classes, um, because as you mentioned, as Ms. Clappin mentioned a little bit. Sometimes that depends on the day, and sometimes it depends on the teacher. I know there were students that I had that did terrible with me and then they had. Did great with the teacher across the hall. Um, and so I'm glad that we're not, not necessarily looking at those things when we're deciding who is advanced and. Who is not advanced. Um, and then kind of along those same lines, I think you mentioned it and there's the mo, the mobility of, um, one of the things that. Really bothered me about math in particular, top math, um, was that in, kind of in seventh grade, sixth, seventh grade, we kind of decided you are good at math. Or you are not so good at math. Um, and so I'm glad that we are starting to make some motion on. Changing, like, it could, they could have been really bad at math in sixth grade and then in seventh grade been really good at math and. So I'm glad we're making some motion there. Um, the other thing that I was gonna mention was um, regarding our financial assistance. For the test fees and stuff. Um, I know that we've been doing that, I think we all know that we've been doing that, but one, maybe this is more for community outreach. That is one thing that I did hear a lot was that people didn't know, and so they didn't sign up for the class because they didn't. Didn't wanna pay for the AP test, we didn't wanna pay for the credits. Um, and so hopefully we can better advertise that those, that those opportunities are out there, so thank you. Um, it feels like we're, we're, we're going in, in the right direction.
Yeah, and we um, know that um, those are on our list of things to. Um, definitely make sure that we're communicating out better some of those opportunities. And I would say when we looked at the data, since there are definitely our bright spots. We have a number of buildings that the percentages are really in line with the overall demographics. And then we do see students that are on an IEP or that have a five oh four plan that are enrolled in advanced placement classes. So we see that, um, you know, certainly there are a lot of places where students are not being limited, that students are not being pigeonholed. And I see where we'll continue to improve that, but definitely strides have been made. Um, my understanding is that in previous years, the high schools were a little less aligned in what was offered. And maybe it was a little less equitable between the two buildings. And we have seen a lot of improvement and the high schools. Were very well in line with each other in what is being offered already. So there are definitely a lot of bright spots there that, you know, we were pleased to see.
Mrs. Stephenson.
Um, thanks for this presentation and giving us an overview of how things are getting started. I feel really passionate about this. Um. I've long been told, um, Jamie, in response to your thing about parents, I've long been told that our high schools. Can be great high schools if you have parents involved who will choose, help your kids choose courses. And I have long thought that is completely unfair and not equitable, um, because not every student. Has parents who will sit down and go through the coursework a, a, and the course book and help them choose courses. In fact. The majority of our students don't. So I, I really caution you on a plan that says. We're just gonna let the parents know and let the students know that these are options. It seems to me like that could be perceived as a disingenuous solution. Um, when we know that some of our students don't, many of our students don't have that kind of support at home. Um. I wanted to ask kind of an overview. We're giving ourselves a year, which I think is very reasonable. We have not, that completely makes sense. Like we can't do anything this year. Registration was already done by the time we got this report, completely makes sense. Looking forward. Do you think that the district's response will be heavier on the, well, let's just take away, we have fourteen AP courses at Stevens. And four at Central. Let's make this equitable by taking away, or will it be? Um, expanding and same for the middle school.
Well, they were already quite closely aligned at the high school, so like by a. I wanna say offhand like a course different at each high school. So no, I, I don't see that. Um, and at the middle school, it was interesting because. The middle schools had some classes that they all offered the same, but then there were a couple of classes that were kind of hit or miss. So I honestly see more schools adding classes, more so than taking away. Um, there's one. That we talked about that there wasn't really a reason for it, that, you know, um, in looking at what happened inside that course. We didn't see it providing enough benefit to students to actually do much with it. And so there's one that we cut, but honestly, the more i- is um, far more on the side of adding.
So in, in, at the middle school level, it's adding.
Yes, and at the high school, it was like one class different, that one class that was offered at Stevens. That went at Stevens's last year, that did it at Central and one at Central that didn't go at Stevens. So it, it's, there's really not much difference at the high schools.
Is the OCR report wrong? Cause they say there were fourteen AP. Is the OCR report wrong? Cause they say there were fourteen AP classes at Stevens and there are. I wanna, I wanna.
That, that is not what we found when we pulled the actual numbers and student enrollment.
And when you say offered, are they actually, are they offered but but they're canceled?
They are opened for pre-registration and if student interest isn't there. They don't run like every class, advanced placement or regular. If not enough students are interested in the course, the courses don't run.
I just, just speaking as one board member, I feel like. AP courses should be given a little more weight at Central High School for enrollment than a basket meeting or whatever course.
Yeah.
Especially when we struggle. What we have is a self fulfilling prophecy. We have a rep, a college that has a reputation as being the college or a high school that's a college prep high school. And we have one that's not. So the kids who are college prep are gonna say, well, I'm gonna go to Stevens because I know they consistently offer AP physics, AP calculus. Eight, you know.
Yes.
And then they look and they know that at Central, it might be offered, but it's canceled.
And that's not what we found. There, what went for classes was like one different.
Okay, well, that is wonderful and I would love for that to be enshrined. I, I. I just cancelling a class at Central because there's only seven people interested. Those seven people. It's, it's their future, you know, like it is a bigger deal. Um, I, I just, I feel really passionate about this. I don't, I think that we have two high schools by reputation. That have very, or you know, that have very different reputations.
And looking at um the courses that we saw that were offered and ran, I don't see that.
Okay, and I very much appreciate that you were able to provide that information. Um. The, I had one more thing I was gonna. Oh, I also have always wondered and maybe you can help me understand, like for a while AP chemistry wasn't offered a few years ago. It is now at Central because there wasn't a teacher. Why can't the teachers move instead of the students? I would, I would think it'd be much harder for students to get across town.
I can't speak to that because I wasn't here, so I don't know.
That's fair. Fair answer, I'll accept that. I'd like to consider that as a solution in the future when we're. Talking about, well, we can't offer this course at Central because we couldn't find a teacher, so we have to cancel it. But if we have one at Stevens. It, I think it might be reasonable to ask them to start their day at one high school and end it at another.
Uh, just to comment on that, uh, there are, there are some logistics. We think about a teacher's daily schedule and the. Number and types of courses that they teach, how do you manage that fitting in at at both, both buildings? So. There, there are some logistics to it. I'm not saying that it's not something we won't work towards, um, but something to be aware of. All right, uh, Mrs. Urban.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. I think especially at the middle school level where there, I noticed a lot of inequity. Um, we were seeing kids that would go to different schools. They would open enroll to other schools because they weren't offering certain courses. So I'm really excited and kind of what um Michael said about pigeonholing kids. I think this, that's really hurt some of their self-esteem to be put in that category. And so I'm really glad that that's not gonna happen anymore. Um, but it's great for all kids. And then, um. Jamie, she talked about things moving quickly. I think that is sort of the blessing of the OCR complaint is that. We have this really strict timeline and education, things in education don't move quickly usually. And so this has required us to really get busy and I think that we're gonna see some really great things out of it.
All right, thank you. Mister Berklin.
I just wanted to, um, I don't disagree at all with Stephenson about the parents thing, um, but just to provide some perspective on kind of the old process. Before, at least at Central when I was there, um, not only did it require a meeting with parents and students and everything, but it also required like a teacher sign off. And so I could single handedly stop a kid from taking AP stats, for example. And so that's the part that I really am glad to see kind of go, um, because of those conversations that we had. Um, and just. Really, and I, I don't, I don't know what the process is gonna look like. I agree that maybe. Not all of our students have parents that are involved and so maybe that is not necessarily something that we necessarily want to do, but I do appreciate and I. I'm glad we are getting rid of, um, that old process where. I was making the decision for the kid whether I thought they could do it. Um, whereas now it feels more like this kid really thinks that they can succeed in AP stats. We've had that conversation. Whether I think so or not. They're gonna go on and do it. So that's the part that I'm, I'm really hopeful for. Um, but I totally agree that we really do need to, particularly with students. Many of our students, um, that don't have involved parents, make sure that they are understanding what that coursework is. So thank you.
All right, Mrs. Clapham.
Just really quick clarification to say, um, kind of seeing to Ms. Stephenson and kind of more for the public. So the, the numbers as far as classes in the OCR were not. Those numbers were from before, like the report came out in twenty twenty three, but those numbers were going back several years, so they were not talking about last school year. So we just have to be careful, keep comparing apples to not apples. Um, when we talk about like what was in the report, what happened last year, those two things aren't necessarily identical. So I think also just for public clarification.
Right, um, I, my only comment is is similar to Mrs. um Stephenson's in the sense that. There's only seven stu- and I un- I understand it, you know, can't have a. A full F T E for three, four students. But as it relates to the OCR reports and opportunities and being disenfranchised. Is, has, has that talked about being an issue? In her case, you have seven students. Okay, it's not enough. We needed eight or nine. So we don't have the class, then what happens then to those students? And you said that we'll document it. So will that fly with OCR or? What do you think?
A part of what they were concerned about too is that we didn't necessarily know what happened. So I think there were times where there were differences in classes that we couldn't explain. And so I think being able to say, you know, just like. Every class that's there that has a special interest and I'm sorry I gave out as an example, but um. It could be anything. It could be that, you know, we don't have enough students who wanna take German two. Um, and if there are not enough students to take German two, even though we know that. Um, you know, students are eligible for a state scholarship if they take two consecutive years of a foreign language. We don't off, you know, it won't go. Um, because we do have to look at what we can fiscally afford. And because if there are only five students in that class, where are the other twenty going to go without a teacher? So.
All right, thank you. That was great. Any other questions? Awesome report. Thank you so very much. All right. We're at other if I'm not mistaken. Right? Anybody have other? I do, but okay. Oh, Mrs. Clapham.
Uh, really brief, I just wanted to say, I think, um, sometimes there's hard things, there's heavy things. Uh, going on the district and sometimes I think that becomes a focus and and not to say those should be ignored. Uh, but I also just wanna point out, for example, today we voted to increase substitute pay. Substitute pay has not been increased in a few years, like. That we as a board and I, I believe in the people at this table, like we are doing things to respond to the community, to staff. To make this district better and we understand that, yes, subpay and recruiting subs is super important. We need teachers in front of our kids. Um, that, you know, getting the busing study, that things are happening and people are working very, very hard when children are not in buildings, which. You know, all hours of the day and night, that, that good things are happening and people are working very hard to. Address concerns, address needs, um, and I think it's important to acknowledge that. And to keep that in the forefront, that we are moving, things are happening and. And happening of things that are important to us and important to us because our community tells us that it's important and needs to be addressed.
All right, thank you. Any, any other others? Okay, um, my apologies in advance for taking up your precious time, but we have to make. Um, a decision, it's just the interest of the board to make sure that we stay connected to our. Local re- representatives and so to that end, we sponsor a. Um, legislator, well, our two options are either breakfast or lunch. We did a doodle poll, um, which came down to Wednesday, September twenty fifth. Either at seven A M or eleven A M. So breakfast or lunch. Okay, so we need to, uh, the sooner we make this decision right now. Um, the sooner we have time to, to get communication out, to get invites out, so that legislators have time to. Put it on their busy, busy calendar. Wednesday, September twenty fifth. Either at seven A M or eleven A M. Those two times had the most, and obviously we're understanding that, you know, if it, that day doesn't work for you. But it was the day that worked for the most, most board members. So do you wanna rock, paper, scissors? Do you want? Either, 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 either. Okay, well, um, uh, Mrs. Moore, uh, do you have a preference? If, if not, it looks like eleven's gonna be.
Eleven is fine.
Okay, all right, Shirley. Uh, Wednesday, September the twenty fifth, we will have a legislature lunch. At eleven A M, um, place, uh, place to be determined yet or is it gonna be here? Okay, all right, it, it will be here. All right, any other other? Thank you, everyone. That was, that was great. All right, at this time I will entertain a motion to enter executive session. S D C L one dash two five dash two point one and two point three.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. Um. Bobby. Are, to include Mrs. Moore, are we gonna have to have a separate?
I'm not sure what healthy plan is already known, but if there is a need for it, I can get it out very.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Moore, did you plan on or have time to be in the executive session electronically?
Yeah, I was not gonna be able to be in executive session.
Okay, all right, so we will, okay, so we will not need, um, another invite. All right, all in favor?
Did she go off? I'm here. Okay, um, Troy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Donna.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
Six zero at seven twenty eight.
All right, I just, I'll, I just wanna say too, thank you, Mrs. Moore. Her and her husband are on vacation. And so she took time out of her vacation to, to be with us tonight. So thank you very much.
You are welcome. Thank you.
All right, bye bye.